Good evening, it's 7:00 PM and time to begin the City Council meeting for the City of Clayton for May 7th. And at this time, I would like the City Clerk to call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Cloven.
I'm here.
Tillman.
Here.
Juan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Trippiano.
I'm here.
Mayor Diaz.
Yes, present.
Thank you, you have a quorum.
And I'd like everybody now to please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we begin the public comment, I'm going to move item number five, recognitions and presentations up to the third spot in the agenda, because I know some people may have other plans for the evening. And with that, I believe we have a presentation and a proclamation for Ed Maresi. And I saw Ed out there in the -- he's back there in the back. Let me begin by reading the proclamation, and then I want to present it to Ed, and we'll take a photograph with the City Council, and Ed right in front of the dais here. First of all, whereas the City of Clayton gratefully acknowledges the innovative and contributions that Ed has made and his Mudville Grill to the community, recognizing their unwavering dedication and support that has enriched the people and the lives of our residents here in Clayton. Whereas Ed's Mudville Grill stands as a highly acclaimed and revered establishment, excuse me, throughout the Bay Area and beyond, serving as a cherished and esteemed partner that anticipates and provides excellent service and essence of the City of Clayton and its spirit. Whereas the philanthropic endeavors of Ed Maresi have resonated profoundly through his selfless and dedicated service and donation and time and resources benefiting the City of Clayton and its residents and immediate areas. Whereas Ed Maresi, born in Concord and raised in Clayton, graduated from Cal Poly with a bachelor's degree in hotel and restaurant management, epitomizes a model of personal achievement, mentorship, leadership, and community service, instilling a deep sense of pride and honor within the City of Clayton. Whereas the City Council should also like to acknowledge the significance and milestones that Ed and through his life have brought to this community. The City of Clayton lends his dedication to Clayton and to the community. From managing Skipolini's Pizza Garden back for 13 years before he took over and started his own establishments, to the realization of his dream with the opening of Ed's Mudville on May 3rd, 1994. Ed's esteemed legacy of service, mentorship, and community support has left an indelible mark on the City of Clayton. Ed married Stephanie Easton, once a former employee of Ed's during his college years, in 1980, and they welcomed their sons Dominic in 1991 and Nicholas in 1984. Dominic was 1981 and Nicholas was 1984. Ed's commitment to family and to community has been a pillar of the strength and inspiration for generations in Clayton. With over 50 years of dedicated service, Ed Maresi has played a pivotal role in shaping Clayton's vibrant community fabric, setting an exemplary standard for community leadership and dedication. Therefore, I, the mayor, and the City Council provide and proudly present this proclamation to Ed Maresi at the 30th anniversary and opening of Ed's Mudville Grill, a sincere recognition of his unwavering and commitment and dedication to the service and the esteemed community of Clayton. Therefore, Ed, if you come up over. (applause) Press the button so the red light comes on.
Oh, okay. So, red is on?
Yes.
A complete honor. Thank you very much. Been here my whole life and loved Clayton for 67 years, and I couldn't imagine a better place to live in my life, raise my family, be here with my wife, and run two wonderful businesses. It was just a great time being a kid here, and it's a wonderful honor and great place to live, and I'll be here my whole life. So, not a lot to say, but thank you very much. I'm honored. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. All right, now we're going to have the prescribed fire presentation, particularly for the Mount Diablo State Park. And I know I saw the fire come right up, and the microphone is yours.
Red is on. There we go. Yeah, thank you for moving it up for us, and yeah, I drove all the way from Gilroy to be here with you guys tonight. So, my name is Mason Highland. I am a senior environmental scientist with California State Parks in the Diablo Range District, which includes Mount Diablo State Park. And I'm just here to briefly present some information on some upcoming prescribed fires that we're planning here at Mount Diablo State Park. Our plan includes 240 acres in the Mitchell Canyon area of grassland. 240 acres is split into 10 different plots. The purpose of the burn is to promote health of our native plant community, to reduce the risk of extreme fire behavior during wildfires in the area, and to build a more healthy relationship between community, fire, and our landscape. All of our burns are done under only ideal weather conditions, only when appropriate resources are available and in place and present, and always follow strictly our burn plans. So, this spring, we plan on burning three of those plots totaling 45 acres, which I think we sent in a map and email. I guess it's all printed, if you guys maybe saw it. Yeah, so three of those plots are going to be burned this spring likely. It's looking like next week, sometime between May 13th and 16th. We're not sure exactly on the days. It's going to depend on whether or not the weather forecast continues to be favorable. Our collaborators include Cal Fire, Contra Costa Fire, San Ramon Fire, East Bay Regional Fire, our local tribal community, the Contra Costa Resource Conservation District, Civicor and other youth corps groups, and I'm sure that there are a few others that I'm not thinking of. We have volunteers and other community groups. And if you want more information, you can look at our website, so Mount Diablo State Park website, and Mount Diablo State Park Facebook page for updated info. And that's where you can gather information about when the burns actually happen, and we'll have notifications that'll come out a few days ahead of time, and then, of course, the day before we actually plan to do the burns. And do I have time for questions, if anybody has questions?
Yes. Any member of the council wish to ask any questions?
I do.
Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Juan.
You said that the first iteration is three plots, approximately 35.
Forty-five acres.
Sorry, 45 acres.
Yeah.
Of the map that we have, there's 10, I think you mentioned, there's 10 different segments. Do you know which of those?
Yeah, so there's one that's on the, I guess it would be the west side called Thistle. It's a little one-acre plot next to the parking area.
Okay.
There's one called Mercio, that's 14 acres, and then one called Regency, that's 30 acres. Those are the three that we're going to burn if conditions became, are favorable.
Okay, thank you. When, and information on the website will?
Information on the website will continuously be updated. We're looking right now, if things are, if things work out the way that we're thinking they're going to work out, we will assemble all of our resources on Monday, and we'll do ignitions on Tuesday and Wednesday, the 14th and 15th. Yeah. And then the rest of those plots are going to be on the list for doing fall burns. So, these ones are specifically selected to, as part of an integrated pest management approach for an invasive species that we're trying to work on out there, where we, if we time fires correctly, we can kill that species and try to get it out of the system to help our native plant communities. But in general, our goal is to do most of our prescribed fire during the fall, because that's the time when our native plant communities will gain the most benefit, where most plants are dormant and won't be harmed by prescribed fire.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead. Councilmember Tillman.
I just wanted to ask what the invasive species is that?
So, the specific one we're targeting is called barbed goat grass.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Tillman.
And then the only other question that I had is, when you do these three plots, silly question, but do you do them on different days? Do they happen simultaneously with teams? How does that work?
They won't happen simultaneously.
Okay.
It'll be one after the other.
Okay.
And likely, we won't be able to do more than two in a day, so we will probably have two days of ignitions.
Thank you.
Excellent. Anybody? Councilmember Cloven.
Just out of curiosity, when was the last time you did prescribed burns?
Personally?
No, here locally.
The last time was over 20 years ago. I think it was 2001 or 2002 was the last time that there was prescribed planned fire on Mount Diablo. So, this is a really important thing that we are starting to return as a practice.
So, what was the reason for 20-year difference?
Oh, yeah, that's a good question. A lot of it had to do with, some of it, a little bit of it was politics internally, but a lot of it had to do with environmental compliance and difficulty with environmental compliance hurdles for doing this kind of work. And we've recently cleared a really big hurdle in terms of environmental compliance that's allowing us eventually to work on 8,000 acres of the park doing this kind of work.
Thank you.
Any other, yes, Councilmember Juan.
Are you doing, other than this, are you doing other outreach to residents that may be nearby?
Yeah, yeah, we went door-to-door to 1,500 houses and put hanging tags. We've done two public open houses. One of them was onsite where we're going to do the burns at Mitchell Canyon. One of them was online, and we are doing one more online open house for the public that's happening on May 9th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the City Council? Well, thank you very much for your presentation, and we look forward to future presentations from you and your organization.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. All right, next up on the recognitions and presentations, number five, is countywide 2024 Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, and our Community Development Director, Dana Ayers. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Have a very brief presentation. I wanted just to come here tonight because the city is working with Contra Costa County on developing a local hazard mitigation plan, or we're, actually, I should say more accurately, we're participating with the county this time to create a local hazard mitigation plan. And that plan right now is in public comment period, and so I wanted to use this as an opportunity to make the council aware, but also to make the community aware that the draft hazard mitigation plan is available, and that we are inviting public comment on the plan. And I'm buying time, and, there we go. Okay, thanks. So, again, this is an update to the countywide 2024 Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Now, before I begin, I just want to answer some questions that I think may come up, which is that the city already has a local hazard mitigation plan from 2021. That is correct. However, local hazard mitigation plans are, must be approved by FEMA, and are, have a shelf life of five years, basically. So, the city's local hazard mitigation plan, which was adopted in 2021, will expire in 2026. For whatever reason, I'm not sure, because it was before my time, the city did not participate in the 2019 update of the countywide, which is why the city had to do its own in 2021. But we are, we have decided as a staff to rejoin the county fold, and so we will be participating in the 2024 update, which means the city will have coverage through 2029. There will be a couple of years of overlap. So, a little bit of background there. So, I'll just briefly go over the plan, some of the countywide hazards, as well as some of the hazards that are more specific to Clayton, generally speak about how to prepare and how citizens and residents and community members can get involved. Next slide, please. Okay, so again, the local hazard mitigation plan, I'll say LHMP going forward, is a five-year plan that sets mitigation priorities for the county. Each jurisdiction that is participating in the plan, there are 40 municipalities, as well as special districts, that are participating. Each jurisdiction identifies where our specific hazards are, and identifies programs, plans, mitigation strategies to reduce risk and reduce damage should those, should those hazards Let's see, so, as I said, the hazard, this LHMP is countywide, but each municipality and each, excuse me, each municipality will have its own appendix in the document. So, there will be an addendum which will be specific to Clayton. Because Clayton has so recently updated its local LHMP, your annex will look very similar to what was done and adopted in 2021, because it is so recent. The main hazards that are identified throughout Contra Costa County are earthquakes, landslides, and wildfire. City of Clayton, we also identified heavy rainfall as a potential significant threat. There are quite a few creeks here. I'm sure many of you will remember that there was some flooding intentional in an appropriate flood plain. So, that is an additional mitigation measure or mitigation hazard that is identified unique to Clayton. And again, for each hazard, the jurisdiction or special districts identify the specific mitigation strategies. And as I mentioned, we're at the point now where we have drafted an appendix. Each municipality has drafted its appendix, and we're asking for the public to weigh in on the draft LHMP update. Okay, next slide, please. I don't think this is new to anybody. Every time I open up my newsfeed, there is some major weather event happening somewhere in the Midwest, in the Northeast, some major thunderstorm, flooding, rainstorm. So, this just simply identifies or highlights the importance of mitigation planning, because as the world changes, hazards will increase. As climate changes, as development moves into, into urban wildlife interfaces, the risk of damage from hazards intensifies. And in 2023, there were 28 different events, with each one in the billions of dollars in terms of damage. So, just highlighting the importance of mitigation planning. The LHMP is intended to, again, reduce the risk or severity of damage from these types of events. Next slide, please. So, there are natural hazards that we are required to identify. Climate change, damming level, levee failure, those are identified for other parts of the county, doesn't have to deal with something in Clayton. Drought, obviously, is pretty universal. Earthquakes for this area is pretty universal. I mentioned flood and landslide, which are related to heavy rainfall. Sea level rise, again, not unique to Clayton so much, but unique to some of the other areas of the county that do have waterfront. Severe weather, including heat. Clayton has an aging population, and severe heat waves can have a greater impact on residents of this community than possibly in some other cities. Tsunamis, not so much, but certainly wildfire, right, is a potential threat here. The hazard, the LHMP also looks at human-created hazards, including cybersecurity threats, active shooter incidents, terrorism, and so the countywide plan also addresses those human-caused hazards. Next slide, please. And the LHMP is great for planning, but we also need to plan our own strategies as individuals. So, as part of this, we're also encouraging people to learn their hazards, make a kit, prepare for those, for those events, make sure that everybody has resources, food, water, medication, hygiene, cash, whatever is necessary for you to be able to survive in an event, especially if you have to do rapid evacuation. And then, a couple of times a year, practice your plan with your family. Time yourselves, figure out where your important documents are, where, where's your, I have a brother-in-law that calls it, your go-bag, right? Okay, next slide, please. Okay, once again, I'm here today to promote the public comment period on the local HMP. Read the plan, please comment on the plan, please tell your friends to comment and read on the plan. It's, it's pretty thrilling. The QR code on the web, on the screen here will take you to the county website where the plan has been posted in its draft form, along with the annexes or appendices for each of the municipalities. For those that are in the room, there is also, there are flyers on the back table where you can, which you can take with you, that also has the QR code on it, and there's also a little pamphlet you can take that, you know, gives you some guidance on how to prepare for events. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Yes. Cast it off to Mr. Cloven.
Thanks. Austin, presentation. I really appreciate the idea of planning, and I loved being a part of the process a couple of years ago. Quick question, is, other than just being prepared, is there a reason financially that we need to have this plan as far as federal or state funding?
Yes, thank you for bringing that question up. I need, I should have mentioned that. The importance of having an LHMP that is certified and approved is that it ensures that you're eligible for disaster recovery funding from FEMA. And there are other grant programs. I'm not an HMP expert, but I do understand that there are other financial programs that the city is also potentially eligible for if it has a valid HMP.
And can you remind everyone when the comment period closes?
Thank you. May 31st.
Anybody else push, ask question?
Okay, thank you.
That might, it might look like Tom on my card. So, my name is Tony Guthrie, and I've lived in this city when it was a town, and so I've lived here about 37 years, and I love it. But recently, I understand that the city is short-staffed, but recently, a tree behind my home on a lot that someone bought was removed. And it was a heritage oak tree, and it was over 100 years old, and the person got the tree removed because the city approved a permit to remove the tree. None of us around the area knew about the tree's removal, and we woke up to saws, and when we tried to stop it, I think they just brought more people to cut it down. I came to the city and was told that the city was short-staffed, but the permit had been given, and there was nothing we could do to stop the tree. Anyone, I'm a property manager, and I manage homeowners' associations, and anyone can get a tree company to say that a tree could be a hazard. This tree was deemed possibly a hazard. In one to 10 years, something could happen to it, and it was taken down. I would like the city to adopt, like other cities, that an arborist that the city brings out looks at the tree before a permit is issued, and doesn't allow a homeowner to give a report from an arborist and have a tree removed. This particular homeowner, I believe, had other, more people come than one to look at the tree, and I know that you can get someone to say whatever you want to remove a tree, because that's what I do. I manage homeowners' associations. The City of Walnut Creek doesn't allow you to take out a tree until it's blessed and looked at and made sure that it's removed. But this tree is now on the ground, and it's dead. The city, I understand, I've said it, is short-staffed, but it's not a reason to allow this type of stuff to happen in our city. Secondly, and we have two things to comment, this particular lot is going to be built on. When we all looked to buy this lot, none of us felt the lot was buildable, they'll live around the lot, because there's a large setback. We've been told that the city is probably going to make this setback go away, and as a homeowner near the area, if someone's going to build a home near me, I hope that, not like the tree, a home doesn't go up behind my house, and too bad for me, because I don't have a say-so. And that's really all I have to say about this issue, but I would like to see some policies and procedures put forth, and not just hear how the city is short-staffed, because that's really not our problem. We pay our taxes and hire people to manage the city. Okay? And secondly, if you're going to burn Mount Diablo, who's going to tell the wildlife you're doing this? You're just going to allow them to burn acres and acres of land and let the wildlife be burnt? I mean, they make tractors to remove weeds. That's what we all use. We don't burn our land to make the weeds go away. Thank you.
Again, I have no cards, but we do have one hand raised. Oh, hang on a minute, we've got another card. Thank you. For public comment on agenda items, and we'll call up Mr. McDonald, Whit McDonald, the battalion chief. Come on up.
Good evening. I was a battalion chief and recently promoted to assistant chief. I was just new to this political world, so to speak. Came by to introduce myself to you folks. Clayton falls into one of my responsibilities. Day-to-day, I'm a shift operations is what I overwatch. You know, I oversee five battalion chiefs, 39 crews, hand crew, ambulance operations, a bunch of other stuff. But one of my collateral duties is making connection with you folks. So, the mayor there has my, my business card, even though the title's wrong, the rest of the information is correct. So, feel free to reach out to me for anything with that. Just a little update of what's going on. We have been in touch with all of the burns going on, and we'll be notified day-to-day with that. We are outside of our normal emergency operations, are preparing for, as we all hit hay fever season, we all start preparing for wildland season. So, crews are prepping and getting ready for the season. We have our dozers out hitting. We have our dozers out hitting, you might see them out in the hills, cleaning up fire roads and cleaning up the lines out there. We've brought on another 12 people, 12 people onto our hand crew so that we can run two hand crews this summer. So just moving in that direction, preparing for hopefully not a busy summer. That's it. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, folks.
Right. Thank you. We have another card being brought. Keith Hayden, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Keith Hayden, again, 1542 O'Hara, speaking as a resident, council member and former mayor. I've been coming to city council meetings and planning commission meetings here in Clayton for over 35 years, and I observed something at our last city council meeting that I had never seen before, and I feel compelled to comment on it. We had a council member, Kim Trippiano, that got up and publicly and personally criticized a local nonprofit charitable organization and announced to the public that she was resigning from that organization. I had never seen a public attack on a local organization done, and I felt it was an abuse of the city council responsibility to run a honorable program every night at city council following the principles of do the right thing and showing ethical practices that are, should be modeled, particularly when we have people here that are receiving awards for participating in the do the right program. And I'd like to see the council modeling that in every occasion. And I feel that was an abuse of the city council position to attack a local organization and feel the individual, Kim, should be censored and asked to apologize. That is not the model that we feel should be used, certainly for students and for residents here in Clayton. And I was personally offended when that was used, and I thought it abused. So I wanted to make a comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Anyone else in the audience here in Hoyer Hall wish to make a comment on public comment for non-agenda items? Okay. We have one hand raised on the Zoom, and that's CW. Hello, CW.
Okay, it looks like I'm in now.
You're on now. Yep. Go ahead.
Okay, let me, let me get rid of the echo here real quick. Okay, well, hello, hello, council members and staff. I'm CW Wolf, president of the CBCA. First, CBCA wishes to congratulate two great restaurants on their milestone anniversaries, Skipulini's celebrating 50 years, and of course Ed's Mudville Grill celebrating 30. The CBCA is second to none in its admiration for these two icons of Clayton business as beacons for everyone to visit Clayton from surrounding areas. We thank them both as well for their ongoing support of the CBCA, and congratulations. Congratulations as well to our CBCA Clayton Art and Wine Festival chairperson, Sandy Johnson, her entire team, the vendors, sponsors, CBCA members, volunteers, and, and to everyone who turned out to make the festival one of our best in our history. The CBCA brought an estimated 25,000 people over two days to downtown Clayton, not only to enjoy the festival, but to visit Clayton's downtown businesses like Ed's and Skipulini's, also the Clayton Club, Cup of Joe's, and Maresse's, just to name a few. The CBCA is proud to support our businesses and our community through our fundraising efforts like the CBCA Clayton Art Wine Festival, just as we've done for 40 years. We look forward to our upcoming events, the CBCA 40th Anniversary Roundup, the CBCA Clayton BBQ and Brews Festival, and of course, the CBCA Clayton Oktoberfest. For more information, go to ClaytonCBCA.org. Thank you.
Okay, and no one else on the line I see for the comment on item number three?
That is correct.
Okay. And we have nobody else in the audience here at Hoyer Hall to speak on non-agenda items, so we're closing on the comment. Moving on now to item number four, which is the consent calendar. Any comments on the consent calendar? Nobody? Okay. There's silence up here on the, on the city council. All right. Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item for item number four, which is our consent calendar? Anybody have any comments on that? Please come up? Anybody? I see none for public comment on item number four, the consent calendar. So closing public comment on that item, and we will now bring it back up to the city council for action.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved it, moved by council member Juan, and did you second it? No.
It's Peter.
Peter did. Seconded by council member Clovin. Secretary, or excuse me, city clerk, please contact or call the roll. Thank you.
Thank you. And on that motion, council member Clovin.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Juan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Trippiano.
Aye.
Mayor Diaz.
Yes.
Thank you, you have five ayes.
All right. We are finished with items one through five and moving now to item number six, which is the reports and the city manager and you are, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. We're on week three as your interim city manager, and I'm still smiling, and I believe the staff is still on my side and working with me and alongside me, and I'm very proud of the good work that our staff is doing. With that, I'm also pleased to share that, you know, we have been rebuilding the team and have recently brought on Regina Ruby Air, who will be helping us with our administrative services, which includes finance and HR. And then we've also brought on Elise, sorry, Elsie, Elsie Okio, and she'll be working with us mostly on HR-related work. And in addition, we have some admin support working in finance, and this young woman's name is Taylor Adeyemo, and she'll, she started, and you'll see her in our office as well. And again, it's nice to have real positive energy coming into city hall, people that are there working hard every day. I think, as I've shared with council members, you know, we have folks out in the field with our police officers and our maintenance workers, and again, these folks work very hard and are very consistent in the service that they provide to, to the city. So we're working on the activities up on the third floor and rebuilding there, and very pleased to have these new folks joining our team, in particular with, with Regina. This morning, we had a budget and audit committee meeting, which Regina led the budget discussions with our committee members. It was really the beginning of our process, and it's going to be an accelerated process. But to see the work that she did working with the departments to pull the information with basically about a week's worth of time to get us to where we are now, very impressive, and I'm very appreciative of that. Tonight, sitting with the city clerk, I'd like Stephanie to introduce Catherine very quickly, just because we have another great new team member, and she was huge support for me today. So thank you, Catherine, for your, all your help earlier today.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Catherine Newery. She will be assisting with the clerk's task as well as front office. She has learned very quickly. She's been taking over facilities, helping outline some processes, and also we are working on our records project to be able to clear out old files and make room for the new actions.
And in, in closing, this is really budget season for us, so there's a lot of heavy lifting going on. We will be working with the budget and audit committee, holding regular weekly meetings between now and June 4th to bring forward information to the council and to the community. Those are public meetings, and we look forward to hearing from our community during those meetings. So thank you, Mayor Diaz.
The mutton is not pushed. Anyway, thank you very much for that report. Next is item seven, which there are no public hearings, but I have two cards, and I can't tell if they are question marks or seven.
Question marks. They don't, she doesn't know what number, question marks.
Okay, you're sure?
I'm positive.
Okay. Is it, is it Nancy Ahern? What are you, what are you going to be speaking on? Let me ask you first. Eight? Okay, and is that also for Tom as well? Okay, just hang on, because we haven't got to that yet, but I just wanted to clear up that item. And Tom Brassel, is he also here? Okay, so you're, you're on that as item eight as well. All right. Okay. Next is item eight, item eight A, which is to authorize the city manager to execute the amendment number one to the City of Clayton's Professional Services Agreement with Thias, or Thias Engineering and Associates for City Engineering Services, which with, has entered into the term of agreement for one year, make sure that June 30th, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. Mr. City Engineer.
I'm going to take this, Mr. Mayor, if you're okay with that. But our engineer is here available to answer questions as, as they arise. I'm going to give a very brief staff report, our report here. I think the staff report speaks for itself. This is action that you all took back in January of 2023, where you entered into a professional services agreement with Thias Engineering and Associates for City Engineering Services. This agreement was for one year with, with four one-year renewals that the council are able to exercise. That term is up, the first year's term is up here on June 30th. So if the council would like to continue with the services of Thias Engineering and Associates, we are seeking council's approval tonight to take that action. If the council were to choose, you do have an off-ramp, every year this item will come forward, and the council has the ability to consider other options. And so you do have the option to, to take time to look at, at other consultants that may perform the services, or as you go through your budget process in future years, look at alternatives to engineer, to engineering services. Only having a short period of time reviewing the capital improvements that the city of Clayton, I do think that you are getting very good service from your city engineer. I think financially, the agreement is you're paying approximately $155,000 annually. That's $12,000 a month. If you were to hire a city engineer to work for your public works director, which you don't have, it would be in the neighborhood of $180,000 to $250,000. If you had a public works director, that position would be slightly above that. Most small cities, and I come from small cities, would have at least one engineer underneath, a senior engineer, a civil engineer of some sorts, so that would be another probably fully-loaded position of roughly, you know, $150,000 to $200,000. And then, as you've seen in this contract, or you see with the projects that come before the council, that the council awards for your capital improvement projects, there are other subconsultants that would become assigned to those projects. Project management is, is, is most commonly used, but you may also need to bring on traffic engineers, soil engineers, geotech, you know, a variety of other services to support that. So the city would have those expenses, because you wouldn't hire all of those additional support. So I think the value you're getting based on the volume of, of work you have here in the city of Clayton supports the moving forward with extension of this agreement for one year's term. And I think if the council would like to review and consider other options, you take the time over this next six-month period to kind of evaluate the services that you need, working with Thias Engineering and Associates to look at alternatives. With that, we are asking the, the council to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment for a one-year extension for City Engineer Services that would run through July 1 of 2024 through June 30 of, of 2025. The city attorney and myself are here to respond to questions, as is Larry Thias, who is principal of Thias Engineering and Associates. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. City council, any questions of the city manager on this? Go ahead. Vice Mayor Trippiano.
Thank you, Mayor. And Larry, I just want to thank you, because I did have some questions for you yesterday on this. And I just want folks to know that a lot of what Larry and his staff do is also your invoicing outside consultants as part of your services. You have a cadre of consultants that are on hand, and I think a lot of times folks don't realize that it's, you know, a lot of the invoicing for Thias Engineering is not just for Larry Thias and his number two person, Jason, is it Jason Chen, I think? But it's other consulting firms, correct? There's about five of them.
Correct. As part of our proposal, we included four in the proposal, and we added a fifth for the GIS, but the city has specific capital improvement projects or special districts, and those are handled by our subconsultants. So typically, a city, for example, wants to design a project. Unless you have a robust staff for in-house design, you typically put out a RFP. So essentially, it's the same process. Given the scale of Clayton's CIP, which is intermittent projects, it, it wouldn't make sense to have in-house staff to design projects. They would be sitting around doing nothing. So you would utilize consultants. So us utilizing a subconsultant would probably be very similar to how a city would hire a consultant for a design project.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I, I, Larry, you have been very responsive to the requests that we have put forward, and just to kind of dovetail onto what the vice mayor has said. We chartered last month the Community Financial Sustainability Committee, which is going to take a look at all of our expenses and I, and I just, and this is not a criticism, but I just want you to be mindful so that we are better aware of, well, the expenses that your department incurs with other services. And so I, I know you can address that, but I just want to remind you of that.
No, I, I recognize every city should be, you know, fiscally responsible and conservative. I welcome anyone to look at our invoices, you know, and if they ever have specific questions, you know, I can answer them. I prepare the invoices, so I'm very familiar with them, and how they're utilized. And if the city has opportunities to utilize, you know, a better cost savings for the city, I encourage it. You know, I think things change in terms of scope, you know, even in my, this year and a half time period under this current contract, we added certain elements of scope, and that was partly because of, you know, internal staff leaving. So like elements like the clean water program or managing certain special districts were added. So I think there is a, a give and a take, so. But I'm happy to be invited to any of those Sustainability Committee or Financial Sustainability Committee to explain sort of, you know, how the approach is, and hopefully it still makes sense. If not, if there needs to be a pivot, then I, you know, I'm happy to discuss that and try to be as objective as possible in this, you know, situation. So I recognize that, you know, certain things I might not, you know, I have some vested interest in, and I recognize that. interest in, and I recognize that. But I try to be pretty open and recognize the city's needs and their particular responsibilities to the community.
Excellent. Thank you, Larry. Anybody else in the city council that wishes to ask questions of the city engineer? Okay, I'm going to open a public comment. I don't have any cards on item eight A, but I have comments for eight B. But are there anybody here in the Hoyer Hall that wish to ask any questions or make comments regarding this item? See none? Anybody online?
There are no speakers online.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to close a public comment on this item and bring it back to the city council for action.
Can I, I just want to, it just wasn't a question, so.
Yes, okay.
I just want to let our engineer know that your work is very much appreciated, so thank you. That's it.
And I was ready to jump in and say this, that you answer all of my questions, and in terms that I can understand them, and I appreciate that. And you really are a pleasure to work with, so thank you, Larry, for all your hard work.
Thank you.
I would concur. And to the extent that we are starting to reach, it's not that there's a cap on what we're doing, but I know that we often send you back to retool some things and bring it back to us, and I know that that adds on to the additional costs, which it's something that's important for the community, and I don't mind doing that. And I think that it's kind of imperative for you to remind people of that. Every time, every time we send you back to go do additional work, it does continue to add up, and I don't think that there should be any question about the quality of the work that you're giving us, so thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
I just want to be grateful for our former city manager, Raina, for bringing you on board. And to that extent that I can give you the attaboy, I'm going to move approval of your execution of your amendment one, the contract.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
He moved approval, and I seconded it.
You're seconded. So moved by Clovan and seconded by Tillman. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Clovan?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Juan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cipriano?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Thank you. You have five ayes.
Excellent. That takes care of item eight A. We'll now move into item eight B, which, again, is in the purview of the city engineer, which is to provide direction to the staff on restriping Mount Air Parkway between Marsh Creek Road and Mount Air Circle, and that's south of the swimming pool in the Cabana Club area, for, from four to two traffic lanes. Mr. City Engineer.
I'll be brief. I understand there's probably going to be a lot of questions tonight and have to answer them. As the staff report indicates, and I think as requested by Councilmember Juan to bring this item back, the city has been planning on doing a paving project for a couple of years now, and included in the citywide paving project is this segment of Mount Air Parkway. The other roads are listed in the staff report. But to be clear, the segment of Mount Air Parkway, Mitchell Canyon Road, and Regency are considered collector/arterial roads, and so those are eligible for federal funds and, like, state funds. So this project comprises of two main components from outside grants, which is 308,000 for O-BAG II, which is federal money, and major streets funds, which is, I don't know the exact numbers, but it's in the 300,000s amount. So that amount of grant funds covers most of the construction costs that's anticipated. There's obviously soft costs that are covered by the city's gas tax funds, essentially, and RMRA funds, so this is also a project on the RMRA list. I presented three options in here, and I wanted to clarify on option one. I inadvertently put the dates as May 2023 and mid-July of 2023. Those were meant to be '24. So in the next few months, if you decide to stay the course, for the lack of a better term, and not changing anything, those dates would be what would be applied. We've had, you know, there's been discussion and talk about making changes to the road alignment in this segment, and so that's detailed in the staff report of, you know, the timeframe of when it was first brought up to myself. It was also done in a survey among their HOA residents, and they also had a board action as well. Ultimately, the latest board action in January of this year was to not request the city to make the change from four to two, and that's what we continue to proceed on. We were already in the process of getting Caltrans approval for the federal funds, and then also CCTA for the county funds. But option two would basically take the time to pause the project. I do think making the change from four to two lanes does require further discussion, because there's a lot of alternatives you can consider in restriping this road. It's 64 feet wide, and with multiple configurations, you can accommodate, I would suggest, a center-turning median, and then one lane in each direction, and some bike lanes, and some on-street curbside parking, or buffered bike lanes, or you could actually flip and put the parking further out in the street and put the bike lane closer to the curb, which is probably a little more controversial, but it's probably safer for bicyclists. So those elements would need to be considered, if you would like to go. Now, those do trigger having to go back to the funding agencies and discuss the potential change, because they have already been authorized, and there are time deadlines on those funds, so they are potentially at risk if they decide that we exceed the deadline period, which we have already on the O-BAG funds. And then, option three is essentially complete the existing project, and then resurface the area, and then restripe it, utilizing temporary paint, so you don't have to take an extra step of removing what's the existing, the striping you just put on, say, this summer, next summer. And that would complete the goal of the federal project, but then, obviously, you're coming back and you're doing the resurfacing twice, and striping twice, but you would really do a temporary-type paint stripe this summer. So I tried to provide different options to the council, recognizing that it's not an easy decision because of the potential risk. And then, we have notified the community, primarily Dana Hills neighborhood, because they're the ones most affected by this potential change via a next-door posting, and also, we are able to send our same next-door posting to the HOA's management company, that they were able to email their members, which is close to 500 members. So I believe, you know, the outreach is done, so folks are aware that this is being discussed tonight, and I'm happy to take any questions. And then, obviously, if there's questions after some public comment, I can return.
Thank you, Larry. Any comments from the council? Yes, go ahead. House Member Tillman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Larry, for the presentation. I do have a couple of questions. I know that the board action most recently was to not change from four to two. And I know that I asked earlier, I was trying to figure out what changed from the first board to the second board. I've been talking to a few members who live in Dana Hills, and it sounds like maybe the board might have switched over or changed over. He's shaking his head no, so that's good, thank you. And so I'm trying to understand the reason why. And my other question is, do you know how many of the 129 yes votes are in the stretch of Mount Air Parkway that were the yes votes?
So to answer your two questions, I would say, relative to the number of property owners on the stretch between Marsh Creek Road and the southern intersection with Mount Air Circle, there's about, I believe I counted, is 26 homes. It does not specify in their survey which ones responded relative to the 89, but to give you scale, the actual fronting homes on Mount Air Parkway with both sides is roughly In terms of the HOA meeting, I did not participate directly. I was in contact with a HOA member who was sort of spearheading this effort, and he provided me some emails, and also kept me up to date on the HOA. I believe after the survey went out, the HOA was willing to positively with changing to, from four to two. I don't believe I received an official letter, but that was sort of the direction. Yeah. And then, in January, what I was informed is, there was probably more public comment, and I was informed that the request for a change from four to two was no longer being sought by the HOA. And so since then, I have been under the assumption of we would proceed as replacing-in-kind. And then, I would say in April, I received a, probably, two different emails from property owners within the HOA requesting for the change. I directed them to talk to the HOA board and informed them. And then, since then, I have not heard from the HOA, just those two property owners, and then this item was requested by Mayor Juan. That's where, I'm not Mayor Juan, I apologize, Councilmember Juan.
Okay, and then, thank you. And then you mentioned that we're at risk of losing funds possibly, because the deadline is already passed for the, is it the O-BAG II funds? And then you also mentioned that we could also use temporary paint. Would that make us out of compliance with either of those grants if we use temporary paint?
I believe, in my opinion, if we utilize temporary paint to put back at, to the existing configuration, that's still consistent with the overall project, and I don't think that would trigger a sort of reevaluation by the federal, from Caltrans essentially, that does the federal funding review. I think the overall integrity of the project is still intact, and that the city would come back with its own project and its own funds in the future to, if they chose to resurface it and restripe it. So the suggestion of paint would be, is thermoplastic has some thickness, and typically, if you use just paint, it'll be easier to cover up, and I would suggest you do another resurfacing, even, maybe even thinner resurfacing, that's what's currently proposed, to restripe the alignment. Grinding out, striping tends to, and then restriping on top of, tends to not look very good, so it becomes an aesthetic issue, especially if you're changing the configuration. So the line light, where the lane lines were, are now changing, and it might be in the middle of a lane line, or a lane at this point. So I would strongly suggest you do, you know, like, the thinnest coat resurfacing for this segment, but it actually adds cost, obviously. In terms of the funding, in particular, the federal funds, because O-BAG II, that process started, I think, like, seven years ago, in that timeframe. Clayton is one of the last cities to get authorization for this O-BAG II. So there's, there were a handful of cities in Contra Costa that had to make the deadline, which was January 31st. We technically got it on February 2nd, but essentially making the deadline. And it could trigger, obviously, that we would need to do a reevaluation, not only from the environmental, but the reauthorization, the engineering. I understand this is, on paper, it's just paint, right? But we are talking about a change in lane reduction, and I don't know what that would trigger. And so I wanted to inform the council that's a possibility. We have not asked yet, felt that we would want to get direction first before we opened that can. And then we would have a similar discussion with CCTA. Their deadlines are probably not as stiff as the federal, and it's not only Caltrans, it's MTC that authorized the money, so we would be talking those three funding agencies, essentially, and making sure that our change is either okay to be made and can continue under its current authorization, or we would have to go through the process again, maybe abbreviated, I don't know, and we would have to ask those questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other, House Member Clovan, please.
Clearly, it seems like the primary desire to reduce it to two lanes is a safety issue because of the excessive speed that's happening, and we've heard that as an issue throughout our city. We've been heard on several occasions. Can you remind us of a couple meetings ago, a few meetings ago, we had a traffic study survey done, and the number of accidents and/or pedestrian incidents on that stretch of road?
Yeah, I think you're referring to the local roadway safety plan.
Correct.
It didn't have a, that plan doesn't have a specific evaluation of Mount Air Parkway beyond the three years that they were, I'm sorry, the five years that they were looking at it. I would have to look specifically at the accident data history for that segment. In the LRSP, they did identify a project further into the neighborhood, or further south for a, a not-full, or not a always-stop at Mount Air and Mount Duncan, but that's outside of this particular zone. In general, what I've heard is, you know, since I became your city engineer, that this has come up, that the four lanes seems to be excessive in terms of traffic. I don't know, I have not done the counts. My own anecdotal evidence is, my guess at the time it was built, it was considered to be somewhat, like, larger planning, you know, making sure that there was proper capacity, because there is no center-turn lane, so essentially, when someone makes a left into their driveway, it does, would probably slow someone down, and so they can go in the other lane. We have not done a recent speed survey. I believe the last one is probably, I have to look at our records, but my guess is the last seven years or so, and that's usually the timeframe. We could look at, but it's currently, I believe, posted at 30 miles an hour. If the police were here, they can probably maybe give a better indication of how often there are speeding tickets in that area, but I think primarily it's due to the overall width of the road, and the concern of having that much amount of space that cars feel like they can travel faster, which I would say anecdotally is probably true. And so you do see a lot of road narrowing or diets, even just visually, to try to slow cars down. How effective it is, that's debatable, but I think that's pretty typical in most neighborhoods that cities deal with.
And since the primary goal of this project for the road narrowing would be to reduce speeds, have we done an effective study of what other alternatives may exist to do so?
We have not. I think if the council would like us to pursue other calming measures, we could, but I have not received a request for other traffic calming measures, such as, like, speed bumps or speed feedback signs, those elements, or under the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. I think one element that I would like to bring to the council, just as a whole, is a Neighborhood Traffic Management Program that's budgeted in your CIP, because that is a common thing that comes up. I would imagine every year, there's going to be some neighborhood that's looking to work on something, and that would be an appropriate place to have those considerations. Usually, that process involves a lot of consensus-building, outreach to the neighborhood, because, yeah, there's a lot of times, a lot of different opinions on what is speeding, you know, and how impactful it is to them, and I think there is, you know, different levels. So what you see in neighborhoods could be different from one to the other.
Thank you. Any other, yes, go ahead. Vice Mayor Cipriano.
Thank you, Mayor. So some of the questions I asked you earlier today, Larry, I just, again, want to share for the benefit of the public, the, so if we did a pause on this portion... for the benefit of the public, the, so if we did a pause on this portion of the citywide repaving project, that would affect the rest of the project? Like, we can't just pause this portion, correct?
That is correct. It's a good question. As I mentioned, the three roads at the very beginning that are on the collector arterial end that are federally funded, those are, they're probably more important to the project because they went through the authorization process. I would say if the city decided to remove one of the residential roads that was not participating, Caltrans and local systems wouldn't care because it's not their dollars. So it is much more critical because this segment is federally funded. And I did look at, you know, I mentioned in terms of cost, if you could remove it and not, and the dollars expended still cover the other two, based on our engineer's estimate, I don't think that's possible because this, even though it's not receiving a heavy rehabilitation, it's still a relatively large area that's still getting resurfaced because it's four lanes, that it contributes to the cost of the overall project. That would be, exceed what is sort of just covered by local funds.
Okay. And the other thing I asked you was, is there a way to, if we were to pause this evening and then you would let us know potentially by the next meeting, if the funding would be in jeopardy? That would mean, you know?
If that's the desire of the council, we could go that route and ask the, begin the discussions. I would say it's 50/50 if we would get an answer before the next meeting, so it might go into June. You do have a backend deadline of obligating the, or awarding the project as well. So I think you may have about a month of time to, to still squeeze it in if you end up going as is. But it will be very tight because the, the award deadline is in August, essentially six months after the obligation. So we do need to advertise a minimum of three weeks and then you have to get on a council meeting. So we're talking at least five to six weeks from the day we actually decide we're going to put it out for bids. So that's the timeframe.
Okay. And then the last thing I was asking you around the cost. So if you went with this kind of thinner material and then we, there was some time to do some design and planning and, again, we were looking, I think you said in that sort of, is it 70, okay, 70 to 120,000?
Yeah, that would be the range if you decided to pause the entire project and come back essentially a year from now. The prob, the cost would be probably slightly higher for option three because you're resurfacing the road as well on top of the restriping. So, so take that as kind of your scale. Just to be very upfront with the council, you know, if, and it hasn't been decided, right, as to what elements would be part of this restriping, but when you see green stripe paint in many of the other communities, it's very expensive. When I first started in Arinda, you know, we did one side of one road for a very short stretch and it was like $30,000 because it's literally, and I will be upfront again with you, I think you want to get the, the, you do not want to get the cheap green paint. It will wear away very quickly and it's worth the investment of utilizing the ones that are thermoplastically sealed to the ground essentially because you will, in this particular stretch, you have a lot of cars turning onto driveways, so you're going to have crossover traffic that will, you know, affect the striping more than say just a plain straightaway. So that's why when I included those estimates, I estimated more on the higher end for potentially green paint. Now, if you don't do that, you know, that could obviously reduce the cost, but if, I have a feeling, once you have the discussions, everyone wants to make sure that, you know, we put what we want and sometimes even buffer bike lanes, which is, you know, adding like two, two parallel strips with crosshatching to then give a little more space to a bicyclist is very costly because you're putting a lot of crosshatching. Those elements also add up. So I think if the change to go to a four to two with bike lanes, there's a lot of different options and that could be contributory to the cost, obviously, because you're going from essentially mostly dashed lines and one yellow center line to likely two double yellow lines essentially and mostly solid lines now as opposed to dashed line. So that just gives you kind of scale of what the consideration is of the additional cost.
Thank you.
Any other, yes, Councilmember Wong.
Can you elaborate a little bit on option three? On the fiscal impact, I think some of them were combined, so I'd like to understand that a little better. So option three, just for references, continue as is, except in the current project, use a less expensive paint, as it were. And then in the near-term future, go in and resurface with the more permanent, restripped road per design. The marginal cost of that on top, we'll probably save a little bit on the cheaper paint and then pay more for the resurfacing and permanent?
Yes. I would say the net between going with cheaper paint and finishing the project as is and the resurfacing of the entire road again is going to be higher than the, the cost of the paint, probably at least five or six times over. I think the resurfacing is, you know, still going to be a lot more expensive than just the paint. So essentially, with option three, you would finish the project, be slightly cheaper than what you anticipate right now because you're using cheaper paint. And then the additional costs, which are outlined in the fiscal impact.
Yeah, that's the part, I can, can you clarify what that represents?
Yes. So the, looking at, this is page 151, the last page. So the three groups I listed here is the 10 to 20,000 will be needed to go back and coordinate with the, the funding agencies. Now, if you choose with option three, you would just move forward, you know, some of this cost would go away. You still need the engineering design because you'd need the coordination, the outreach. And I frankly think that's a, you know, months-long process. And then the last number of the 40 to 70,000 is the actual construction cost for putting in the new paint or the new thermoplastic paint in the new alignment.
So that represents approximately 60 to 100? If we just call the savings?
Yes, yes.
We call the savings on option one wash?
Yes, I think that's fair.
And just talk about the increase for option three is about a range of 60 to 100, give or take?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understood how this was written.
Yes. Yeah, I think the first number would go away if you did option three.
And you said it's going to go out to bid and then work begin in the summer of '24? Is the details of the, of the paint quality or, I don't know how we're describing it, is that included in the bid itself or is that something that can be decided later?
It should be included in the bid. I, you know, obviously you would get a better price if it's included, the original bid as opposed to a change order. So if you selected option three, what I would do is specifically mark this location and change the specification from what's typically thermoplastic paint to just paint, traffic paint. And that would have some reduction in cost. I'm not saying it's a lot, but you know, no point in putting out thermoplastic if you're going to cover it back up in a year. So I think the, the regular paint, while it will be a little duller and not as retro reflective at night, just to be clear, could be good for a year and you would, you know, be sufficient until you come back, assuming you come back in a year, essentially.
Okay. Can you, and you mentioned a road diet. I think that's what this is called colloquially, maybe?
Yes.
You know, I, in, in looking at this, this is, I think this has been a long time coming. So is it, you know, I'm looking at the U.S. Department of Transportation site talking about a road diet and essentially their recommendation on safety for road diets, thinking that in most or many cases that it would overall improve safety and reduce street, reduce speed. I think this is not necessarily new, but new-ish. Is there, you know, in your experience, have, have you done the, this type of project in the past or have you done any reading in professional journals regarding the impact of a road diet?
I have not specifically done a construction road diet project where you physically change the, like the curbs and that. And in this case, we're talking primarily a paint situation. I think the construction of changing the curbs is the most effective because there's physical barriers, right? Just to be clear, if you just paint it, you're still relying on the driver to not go outside of the lines and those elements, which I think most people would follow the traffic. But, you know, physically, there's nothing to stop them from driving around or, you know. So that's not as effective and I do think the visual nature of a narrower road does tend to slow cars down. Like you see, it's a little bit apples and oranges, but the concept is similar, like in downtown areas where they tried to make the corridors, like in a commercial area, for example, even in Clayton's downtown where it's just two lanes, it's more pedestrian-friendly, where it's easier to cross the road. And because of the side streets and the driveways coming in, there's a sense of slowing down because of the more tighter nature. So I, I think there is benefits. But this is a little bit of a hybrid, right? Because this is just, this is just physics, it's visually narrowing it, not physically narrowing it. But it could be a good start. Frankly, physically narrowing it presents a whole host of problems that I would think take more than a few months. So any consideration beyond that, I think is a whole different discussion. But in my own professional kind of experience, you see it's much more common in the last, even in my career, in the last 15 years, it's become much more prevalent and utilized than say when I started my career, you know, 25 years ago. So I think there has been a substantial change to effectuate this type of change in neighborhoods. And if you did a traffic study for the four lanes, I'm not sure it's required, you know, but that's something we could look at if that's something that is requested. But my guess is it's, you know, in terms of operationally, it does not need four lanes.
And last question, I mean, this may be, may be a better question for Mala, but I'm going to, you're at the podium, so I'm going to ask you. Ultimately, who has responsibility for public safety on the, on the streets within the area?
Well, if it's a public street, then the public agency generally has the responsibility. I mean, there are always certain cases where there may be overlapping jurisdictions, but generally speaking, the city is, that has the right of way, maintains it. They are going to be the ones that get sued usually and that's typical of the case I've seen in most jurisdictions I've worked is if it's a public street and an accident occurs, a city agency will typically get him, be named in the lawsuit.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from the city council wish to address this item before we open it to public comment?
Yeah, one more.
Go ahead.
Just one more. So at this time, we do not have an official request on behalf of the neighborhood from the HOA in Dana Hills.
No HOA requests, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no other questions or comments from the city council before we act on this item, I'm going to bring it open, open it up for public comment. And I have several cards here. And now Nancy Ahorn, you're up to bat. Your microphone, hit the on button.
I have been a resident of Clayton for 40 years. I have lived in Dana Ridge for 35 of it, five years into Montair Circle, which comes off of Montair Parkway. Montair Parkway has been operational quite well for 51 years. My house was built in 73. This is all about money. That's all this is, you care about. You come off of Marsh Creek, you turn right onto, at the Gardener Center, and you turn onto Montair Parkway. Immediately, people who have residence turn an immediate right. You go up a couple hundred more feet, people turn to the left. You go up to the stop sign where the HOA pool is and you either go straight or you turn right, which is where I turn. When I come down the street, you have a right and a left lane. A lot of times, I need to take the left lane. Do I want to stand in line with everyone who's going to work and to school to the left lane? I, have you done a poll of how many bicyclists actually use that road? Dana Hill, Dana Ridge, there were no bicyclists. I've seen maybe five bicycles in the last five years and they don't even fall, follow the rules of the road. Let me see. I think that's about it. But if any of you have to use Montair Parkway to get to your house? Probably not. Would you like it if someone came into your neighborhood and said, "We're going to cut your lanes down from two to one"? That's basically what you're doing. When you turn right to go onto Parkway, you have the daycare, the mothers parking right there with kids. What happens if the kid runs out and you have one lane? When I go that way and they're all lined up, I go to the far lane to make sure I don't have a problem with the kids or the parents. This is much more than just money. This, you have a lot of, as I said, you turn right, a couple feet up, you go up a little bit, you turn left, you go up there, you turn right. And on top of that, we have an HOA pool that is in, that has a swim team. So everyone who comes into our town is supposed to be in a one-lane road up to that pool, which has always been two lanes for parking. You have no idea how many cars that is and how many people. And on top of that, have you seen Montair Parkway? It doesn't need to be paved, it's fine. What you're, what is trying to be said is we need to pave it so we can do the bike lanes. That's the only reason. Take a drive up there sometime, it doesn't need repaving, it's fine. And speeding? I don't see a lot of speeding. I go up and, I'm retired, I go up and down that street all the time and so do a bunch of my friends. This is wrong. It is totally wrong.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Totally wrong.
Next is Tom Brazil.
Oh, heck, you had it right the first time. It's Brassel. And I was going to congratulate you, Jim, for saying it right the first time. First of all, appreciate you listening. I came here tonight to, by the way, nice to see you, Holly, we saw you at Ed's the other night. From what I've heard, there is a tremendous amount of opinion, supposition, very few facts. Road dieting is reduction of the width of the road, not relining it. So it is a portion of it. But again, when you're talking about that, it's a significant, and I'm no engineer, so let me just say that. We've lived here for 37 years, brought up two kids who rode their bikes on the swim team. I was a member of the swim team for 20 years, was an announcer for 15 of them, watched people come and go. I will agree, I would say one thing is that we talk about bicycle safety, what I would like to see is, as much as I love the bikes and mountain bikes, I would love to see somebody stop at a stop sign sometime because people roar through the stop signs on a regular basis. So if we're doing the rules of the road and looking at bicycle safety, perhaps we start with bicyclists first and advise them to stop for the stop sign. Can't tell you how many times I've come along. Can't tell you how many times I've come along Clayton Road, Marsh Creek, I should say, to make a right up into Mount Air, and watched over my shoulder as the bicycler goes right through. Okay? That is real danger. Now, in terms of the finances, it sounds to me like we are making decisions based on a couple of emails. The HOA has voted against this twice, that's the residents of the community. You have, I lived in Dana Ridge for 13 years and have been in Dana Hills for 24 years. I don't see how this would reduce speed. I see how it would back up traffic tremendously, which creates another issue, people getting impatient and stuff, that's just psychology. But again, it all comes down to what is best for the community? What does the community in that area want? They have voted not to have this done. My recommendation, based on not having any real traffic safety reports, any facts or anything like that, just some people who have requested to be heard, is that move forward, keep the deadlines, re-stripe as-is, complete as-is, and be done with it. Because it really is inconsequential based on a zero amount of research into, and I know I'm done, I feel like there's a little bell going off in the sidelines. You all vote for the best of the community. That's why you're here, you have done a great job. So my recommendation is voting for the best of this part of the community is to simply move forward with the existing plan. That's the simplest, best expense, use of expense.
Thank you very much. There was another name on your card that wanted to address this item. Is that person still here?
That would be my wife right here.
Would she want to come forward?
We, I should say, we raise two children.
Well, not to badger the same thing over and over again, but the bottom line is, as Nancy had said as well, Dana Hills has been Dana Hills for a long time, many years. The traffic patterns seem to have worked. There's really, can't find a reason to change it. And putting, in my opinion, in bike lanes, I actually talked to one of the Clayton police one day, because they like to sit across the street from the entrance to Dana Hills. And so I actually drove down there to ask them a question that completely baffles me, which is, I asked them, "Has there been a change in the rules of the road and do bicyclists still have to follow the rules of the road?" Meaning stop signs, stoplights. And he says, "No, there hasn't been a change. Yes, they do have to follow the rules of the road." I said, "Well, perhaps you might wanna sit at, at the end of Dana Hills sometime, but you have to do it, like, you know, lunchtime and in the evening and on weekends, because there are countless, countless, countless cyclists and children." See, what the problem is, since the cyclists do it, the younger kids see them not stopping at stop signs, so then it's like, "Well, I guess we don't need to do it." And it's, it's, that's the biggest problem in, in coming down Dana Hills, is people not following the stop signs on bicycles. So anyways, I don't see a purpose of putting bike lanes in, because quite honestly, I don't even think that they would stay in the bike lanes, much less stop at the stop signs. So that's basically all I wanted to say, but thank you.
Thank you. Ben Grover.
All right, change of pace, everybody. Thank you for having us on the agenda, I appreciate it. I live in that area of Mount Air Parkway that is in discussion, obviously. And I'm, I'm here to voice my support for reducing to two lanes. If the council decides that the third option is the most cost-effective, I'm supportive of that. I think it's important primarily that we make the streets safer. Just, I can't help but respond to what I just heard, because I spent the weekend kind of observing, and there's people biking up and down that street all the time, they opt to go on the sidewalk because the street's dangerous. There was a swim meet this weekend. It was the perfect example of why this needs to change. The volume of cars is not tremendous for most swim meets, there's one of the year that's pretty busy. But what happens when there is a mix of locals and non-locals? You get multiple times, you've got cars going next to each other up the road or down the road. Are they racing each other? Because it sure feels like they're racing each other. Are cars passing each other in a short stretch of the road that, we're talking about literally saving seconds of their drive time down the road or up the road. Somebody needs to pull in their driveway and there's a slight pause, oh, God forbid, they'll be okay. I'm more concerned about the children that ride their bikes there. I personally cycle to work from that neighborhood. It's dangerous. Also, there's, we've got neighbors that ride motorized wheelchairs up and down that road in the street. It's incredibly dangerous. So what I, what I also wanted to point out in the agenda item, there was a note that the two center lanes are 14 feet, and there's 18 feet on the side ones. I looked up what the width on a federal highway recommendation is, it's 12 feet. So these are wider than what we would build a highway. No wonder people speed through the neighborhood, we've built it that way. Really importantly, recently, the council decided on a Vision Zero plan. These are the kinds of decisions that have to be made if that is real. If that Vision Zero is really what the city wants to accomplish, we want to eliminate pedestrian deaths, we want to eliminate serious injuries, these kinds of changes need to happen, not just on my street, but throughout the city. Whenever resurfacing comes up going forward, these kinds of, call it a road diet, whatever it is, it needs to be considered, it needs to be looked at as, how can we make this street safer? Also, the big plus side, may not realize now, you might see down the road, it's an economic benefit to the city to make better places, not just a pass-through. Our streets that we have through our city currently are pass-throughs. Somebody drives from one place to another. Imagine if our downtown had four lanes going through it? It'd be terrible. The counterfactual is true, if you reduce lanes, you make better places for people. Property values go up, the city value goes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grover. Terry Rappicavalli, come on up and...
Okay, so I'm not a public speaker, so I'm gonna read a prepared statement. I also live on that affected area between Marsh Creek and Mount Air Parkway. So regarding the proposed restriping changes, we do not believe that the restriping will impact the speeding issue sufficiently to justify the inconvenience to those living on Mount Air Parkway in the Marsh Creek to Mount Air Circle corridor. Although a four-lane roadway is unusual in a residential neighborhood, it was probably designed that way to accommodate the amount of traffic that would converge on that stretch of road to enter and exit Dana Hills and Dana Ridge. We are against the proposed restriping for the following reasons. One, driving lane in each direction will lead to congestion, and when leaving the neighborhood during commute and school drop-off pickup hours and swim team events, our 503 home neighborhood in Dana Ridge essentially uses Mount Air Parkway as the main in-and-out thoroughfare. Also, head-on traffic, if there were two lanes, is always dangerous and may lead to serious accidents with speeding and distracted driving. The second lane serves as a buffer lane, so we can safely pull out of our driveways. We also observe the slower-moving traffic often uses this lane. People will use the buffer lane on the other side of the street to get around us when we need to make, we need to wait to make our left hand turn into our driveway. Additionally, Republic Services waste trucks use the buffer lane for their garbage service. Cars trying to enter driveways between Marsh Creek and Mount Air Circle will not be able to cross the double-yellow line, which will hold up traffic during certain peak hours. There was mention of a dual-turn lane median, but I'm not sure how or where that would be configured. The speeding issue is mainly due to the lack of a stop sign at the intersection of Mount Air Parkway and Mount Whitney Way. We have advocated for a stop sign there for decades. Trying to cross Mount Air Parkway on foot is always risky. Since the portion of Mount Air Parkway is not pedestrian-friendly, a stop sign in both directions would allow crosswalks to be added. I have provi, oh, okay, so I'm gonna skip that. We've raised our family and lived in our Dana Hills home for 30 years. We have endured the traffic speed issue and understand the safety concern, but the proposed restriping changes will not do enough to mitigate the problem. Cars should be forced to stop at the Mount Whitney Way intersection. We doubt many would grossly increase their speed from the Mount Air Circle stop sign if there was one at the Mount Whitney Way, and it would slow down traffic to the stop sign at Marsh Creek Road as well. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, Paul and Terry Rappicavalli.
Thank you very much for your comments. Louis Hunter.
Hi, my name's Louis Hunter. I'm the one that sent all of you the email about reducing the lane, so I'm in favor of reducing it to two lanes, based on the email that I sent you guys that, that I think there was a little bit of confusion, or not confusion. My understanding of the HOA's stance on the lane change was that because there was 90 people that were in favor of it, of the 503, they didn't feel that was high enough, so in my, what I got of it was, they weren't recommending either way. They wanted us to come down here and talk to you guys about changing the lane. There was no keep it four lanes through the HOA. I've lived on Montair Parkway for over 25 years. My Bronco got totaled by a drunk driver hitting it while it was parked on the street. My work truck got its mirror busted five times. The neighbors next to me had their car totaled. Like the gentleman said, there, there are several people that, motorized wheelchairs that, that used the street. I'm retired, so I'm out in front a lot, working, mowing the lawn, picking weeds, doing stuff. There are a lot more kids in the neighborhood now than there was when I moved in back in 30 years. There, today, there was half a dozen kids riding the motorized scooters up and down the street. If they feel unsafe, they go on the sidewalk, then the people that are walking their dogs and just walking every morning, Bill Woolcott and his wife walk by every day, they have to go out in the street because of the kids riding the bikes on the sidewalk. The lane, we tried to get this lane changed 25 years ago when I first moved in, and like these individuals who don't live on Mark, Mount Air Parkway, don't understand the speeding that goes on up and down the street. There are some that follow the, the speed limit, which was 25 miles per hour when we moved in, but the city came back and the police department said they couldn't enforce the 25 mile an hour speed limit, so they raised it to 30. I lose my train of thought. The proposed lane change that we voted on is the email that I sent all of you that had the two lanes in the middle, right? So with the restriping, wouldn't change the center striping, and it would only add the bike lane striping along the parking side. The rest of the city doesn't have the green bicycle lane paving. That's, it seemed to be a new thing that's been entered and conquered. But I, the, of the 503 residents, approximately almost 200 don't use Montair Parkway. They turn onto Montair Circle or the other cross-street, Mount Whitney, I think it is, and go to their houses that way. So of the 503, there's approximately 250, 300 that live and use Montair Parkway, and 90 voted for the lane change.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
Thank you.
Kevin. No last name.
My name's Kevin Wheeler. I live on Mount Air Parkway. I think it ought to be left the way it is. I was not one of the 26 homes, I'm probably number 27 on there. I'm after the stop sign, first house after the stop sign at the top of the hill. I don't see a problem with the four lanes the way they were, as the previous gentleman spoke. We did have it at 25, the city raised it to 30. Same with Marsh Creek. It was 25, the city raised it to 35. And so we've increased that. There isn't a problem going up the hill, there could be a problem coming down the hill. And from my point of view, I see the largest problem after the stop sign, coming down the hill and running the stop sign, which is not part of this preview that we're, what we're discussing. So there's other issues. But as far as safety, I've yet to see a traffic report about any accidents on Mount Air Parkway from the top of the hill down to the bottom. I agree with some of my neighbors here, for safety, the last thing I want to do is be trying to make a right-hand turn off of my, um, Mount Air Parkway at Marsh Creek and be in a single lane, because everybody's going left towards, towards downtown. So we're able to bleed that traffic off, we're able to pull people over. They used to have the buses come through there also, the bus routes have changed, going up the route, they no longer go that route. And I think, safety-wise, we're just fine the way it is. Aesthetically, it's beautiful to come up there. If I have to drive up there and see all these other markings and all these other items on there, the kids are gonna ride on the sidewalks, they're gonna drive where they, where they want. We've got one wheelchair guy that I've seen driving his electric cart in the evening up there, and I've yet to see a problem. Therefore, I think the city ought to vote to leave it as it is, just re-stripe it, leave it at four lanes. The other point that I want to make on this was that I was not notified by my HOA. Somebody dropped something off in my mailbox yesterday. I've never come to one of these meetings before, but after listening on the phone, I decided to come down here and voice my concerns about it. I think, I think we could spend this money better. I think the street is safe enough. I think the police try to do their darndest as far as putting up the speed limit signs that come up and flash our, our speeds, and we slow down for that. But I can tell you that at the top of the hill, the last thing I want to do is be sitting at the top of the hill to go across for one house to turn into my driveway and be stuck behind a bunch of people that are making right to go up Mount Air Circle. And to say that only out of the 503 homes, only a few of them use this, 200, that's not true. Everybody that lives at the top of that hill, past that stop sign, uses that. People over on Mount Whitney uses that. And people on Mount Air Circle also use this to come down. They might use the other way and come all the way down there. So with that, I appreciate the time, and I would like the city council to just spend that money someplace else and leave it the way it is.
Thank you very much.
Okay, do you have anybody else up in the hall that wishes to address this item?
Can I just say one other thing?
Just one quick.
Do you use your time? Do you have a specific question or do you have a comment that's can be limited to a minute or less?
Less than a minute.
He does, I do.
There are no other, there are no other four-lane roads, there are, are no other four-lane roads in all of Concord and all of Clayton for every other subdivision. Oakhurst, Regency, anywhere in Concord and Clayton that has four lanes for a residential area. Every other, every place, every place they live and go to are single lanes. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else that did not fill out a card? All right, I'm gonna move on to the Zoom attendees. I think we have at least one person that wants to speak. Nope, thank you.
Mayor, mayor, since we did open it up-- Since we did open it up to allow another member of the public who previously spoke, I think we need to allow anyone else who would like to previously spoke, speak for consistency, I think. But you gave a shortened abbreviated amount of time.
So we should allow that, okay.
I'm just gonna be very, very quick. Way more than just a few hundred go up above Mount Air Circle, okay? Whether it's swim team members, and I would venture to say of the HOA voters, to say that all ninety live in that one given area, I, I don't believe that. And I, I don't see the stats on that. So again, use of funds, doing it the way it is right now, hit the budgets, hit the timing, be done with it, move on.
Thank you, sir. Okay, no other commenters from the Hoyer Hall. We're gonna go to the Zoom attendees, and I think we have at least one member that would like to speak.
Yes, Shannon Cox, your microphone is available.
All right. Ms. Cox, you're on.
Hi, thank you for your time. Um, I also live in that affected portion of Mount Air Parkway. Um, and I also have young children who walk on those sidewalks. And I feel that having it reduced down to one lane would be extremely beneficial. Um, there's been numerous times where I've been pulling out of my driveway and have had a car flying down at me in the lane closest to the houses. So the fact that somebody said earlier that they use the lane further is not the case. Um, they use both lanes to fly down Mount Air Parkway towards Marsh Creek. So I am for having the lanes reduced from two to one. For the safety of my children, who are young and growing up in this neighborhood, who also are on the swim team. And, and so I do understand the traffic. There are multiple ways to get to the pool. So I appreciate your time and thanks for taking my concerns.
Thank you. Anybody else on the Zoom attendees there?
There are no other speakers.
Uh, I, and I just want to make sure I, that everybody got this, but on, uh, from two people I got directly, uh, written comments that I sent to the city clerk and they dispatched them to all of the city council members. That's from Frank and Susan, uh, uh, Winslawski, Winslawski. And Scott Denzil also submitted comments on that. And I don't know if we had any others that are entered into the public record.
Those would be all. Everything that was received before five P M. was added.
Thank you very much. And with that, then, I'm going to close the public comment, both here in Hoyer Hall and on the Zoom attendees. That concludes the public comment. Bring it back now to the city council for action, direction. We open it up. Councilmember one.
So, thank you. So I, um, I requested this item, so appreciate us taking time and all the residents coming out. There's a couple, just for clarity. The council did receive a note from the HOA, and what they said was, among other things, said, "Based on the discussion at the board meeting, there is no formal plan for the association to pursue a lane reduction. If you, as a homeowner, feel strongly either way, we recommend that you attend city council meetings or contact them directly to voice your opinion." So, you know, I, I take that to mean that there's taking no action. It doesn't indicate one way or another. That's how I'm interpreting what they said. Based on the data, what, it was in the staff report, but essentially, I think they did a survey via email, so some folks may not have gotten it or, or whatnot. But that happened, I believe, in twenty-twenty-three timeframe. It said one hundred and twenty-nine homeowners responded out of five hundred and three. Of the hundred and twenty-nine, eighty-six were in favor of a lane reduction and forty-three against. So about two to one of those that responded. And the respondents were just shy of twenty, around twenty-five percent, give or take. So that's just the, the information that, that they said. And then the other thing that I thought that was important here, I'm pulling it up as we speak. You know, I mentioned when our intern was here, one of the things that, you know, that I was looking at was from the Department of Transportation, the Federal Highway Administration. You know, on their information regarding road diets, you know, they say, you know, for roads with appropriate traffic volumes, there's strong research to support, or strong research support for achieving safety benefits through converting four-lane undivided roads, which is what we're talking about, to three-lane cross-sections with T W L T Ls, which is the two-way left-turn lanes. Or as when I was taking driver's ed, they called those the suicide lanes. I don't know if they still do that in driver's ed. Operation design changes associated with road diets that promote safety include vehicle speeds, or reduced vehicle speeds, reduced vehicle pedestrian, bicycle and vehicle conflicts. And then, you know, they talk a lot more in detail about the types of conflicts. I like the euphemism conflicts when they say that because it's really like a car hitting something. Um, and they talk about the nature of when those conflicts could occur. So, you know, this is, this is from essentially the feds talking about their, um, their guidance and their, their recommendations for these things, you know, if the fact pattern merits it. For me, what, the reason I brought this up was not, the primary purpose was not bike lanes. I too wish bikes followed the road, the rules of the road. I see that often. But, you know, it was, is primarily for safety. I used to live in Dana Hills. I lived right by the pool, so I'm, I'm well aware of the traffic pattern there. And oftentimes, I mean, I think some of our council members had kids that were on the swim team, and some of us lived there at certain times, so we're, we're, we've been there at various times. There is excessive speed on that particular stretch. It is a very short stretch, um, in my experience from living there. And the nature of the design of the road tells drivers to go faster. It's super wide, wider than I would expect. I mean, I grew up in Martinez, and we had a one road that was almost as wide, not quite, and they did the whole lane reduction, and they had the one center lane. And they had their speed limit at twenty-five miles an hour. But it was a miles-long stretch, and it dramatically changed how people drove on that street. One other thing that started happening, I think more recently, is the Clayton Children's Center is in the neighborhood. And they apparently do pickup. I don't know if they do drop off there, but, because I'm not there in the morning at that time. Okay, so they do drop off. So, so they do, well, I've seen the pickup, I haven't seen the drop off. But, um, it's right at-ish at the corner of Marsh Creek and Mount Air Parkway. And the kids are in the street where the cars go. I mean, not all the time, but they're kids, right? They're, these are like pre-K kids. By removing that lane, it provides a safe, a buffer of safety to everyone, not just the kids. And I think all, the vast majority of the data says that this type of thing increases safety and reduces speed, which is something that I think is really valuable. We did adopt Division Zero, which is essentially like prioritizing not killing pedestrians in the street. Literally only takes one, so, um, I don't know about the cost. I think the risk of, the risk of jeopardizing federal funds is not great. Like, I don't like that. And so, you know, the third option that was proposed obviates that, but then also gives us the opportunity to like involve people for what they want. Like, I, I wouldn't be a fan of the, the green thermoplastic paint, even though I, it does look cool, but I don't know if it's right for that, for that, for our neighborhood. That, that street has no bike lanes right now, right? So that cars park, there's, there's room for, I forget what the width of the street was, I think I wrote down, sixty-four feet? Was that what their intern said? Okay. Whatever we happen to go with, if it results in, in two, through, through lanes of traffic, I think that would, would be what I would be in favor of. But how we get there and when and what the ultimate design is, I'm not, I'm not too particular on. But I do think that the way we design our streets really impacts the way people drive. So that's, that's all of my comments.
Thank you. Anybody else from the city council wish to chime in on this?
Well, the only thing I want to say, and I do appreciate everybody emailing us and contacting us and coming out tonight and, um, calling in. I guess my biggest concern is, and Larry, I don't know if you're able to address this, is losing that funding right now. I mean, this has been a project in the making for five years, did you say, or so? And, um, that's why I was saying, is there an opportunity to kind of hit the pause button? See if the funding would be in jeopardy so we could make a more educated, um, decision? I don't know if that's a possibility, but, um, I know you say you're not concerned about it, but we've been working on this a long time, and we would hate to lose that funding. I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but--
Well, to clarify, I, I am concerned about it. Like, a lot about losing the funding. On the federal component, um, I think option two, to me, is not a great option because it's the high, it's, it presents a risk, and I, I don't like that one for me personally. Option one is essentially status quo, so that's always on the table, status quo. And then option three is, uh, you know, complete the project, complete the project, receive the fund, or utilize the, I'm trying to come up with the right word. Utilize the funds and then do it in a way so that we, you know, that we can do the striping change, you know, in the near future. That's, that's option three essentially. And I think what Larry said was, if we do that, then marginal, the increase in marginal costs is in the range of sixty to a hundred thousand dollars.
And also, Larry, can you please remind us, we, there is a deadline that we have to select, is it for the contractor that we're?
Yes, um, in accordance with the federal guidelines, you need to, the council needs to award the contract to a, the bidder within six months of the authorization to proceed, which was in February second. So essentially, it's early August. I do think there's probably a little bit of give there, but that's the rule, essentially. So regardless of what the design is, if there's a decision to discuss it further, that's the backend risk you run into if you still pull back, right? And still do the project sort of as-is or option three. You could, less risk than going back and saying you're changing it, but that is an element that they require as well.
And we have not gone out to bid yet, obviously, because we're kind of--
Yeah, I was ready to go, essentially, and, um, uh, this item obviously came up, so it doesn't make sense to advertise before we have this discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Clovin.
How long does the temporary striping left, last?
Pain in probably this particular situation, relatively low volumes. You know, we're not talking about Clayton Road. I'd say it's years, you know, um, you know, uh, it could be two to three years, no problem. Basically, the way it is, as-is. It's a lot of dashed lines, so you probably have less impact, you know, of cars running over it. It will fade, you know, you know. You'll notice the difference, just to be clear. And there'll still be some reflectors every certain distance. But I would say maintenance-wise, it could probably get to five years if you really wanted to push it, but I, I would say three to five years.
In, in general, if we, if we choose option three, let's not lowball it, it's gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars additional out of our own pocket to remove the stripes than do it in a way that makes sense. There are so many options on the table of what it could look like if we were to, um, make it a two-lane road or some hybrid thereof. And I can, I, I, in my head, I could think of three or four options that could go along with that. I loved some of the visual imagery that you all brought, especially of coming down Mount Air Parkway on a, on a morning, a busy morning, if you want to take a right, and somebody was taking a left and there was only one lane. But if you look at that, that part of the road, you've got trees and a median. There's no reason why that couldn't stay two lanes to alleviate some of that, that challenge anyways, because there's no homes on the right-hand side there. So like, I mean, there, there are a lot of things that happen. I loved your idea about possibly some type of crosswalk with a, um, a, uh, some, some visual and, and to slow traffic, a stop sign. I mean, there are things that can be done we haven't even thought of yet. But do we, does it, does it mean going to two lanes? I don't know. And quite frankly, there, there's a lot of work that would be necessary to figure out what that looks like and would be, would make sense to the neighborhood and to the council. And, um, again, if, if we go that route, we're looking, it's coming out of our own pocket. We're gonna have to figure out what, how to come up with a hundred thousand dollars for that additional effort. So I'm just, just acknowledging those facts, if we'd go number three.
Yeah, I think you mentioned that, that, that there's transportation dollars associated with this type of, uh, associated with, if we were to do option three. It, it's discretionary transportation dollars, so the money spent here is money not spent elsewhere. But there is transportation dollars associated that we have.
That was the other question I asked you. If we spend it here, then we can't spend it somewhere else. But I also like the stop sign too at Mount Whitney. That's the first time I've heard of that. So I don't know if that's something we can--
A stop sign, though, it stops all traffic all the time. So if we're concerned about, I mean, you will, you will one hundred percent have a stop, well, unless you run the stop sign.
I just don't know if we've ever discussed it before, so-- Slows traffic down, yeah.
Would you like to comment on that?
Well, to install a stop sign, I think you're aware, when we did South Brook and El Camino, there, there's a specific process through the M U T C D that you follow. So, you know, essentially putting it in and setting speed limits so people are aware. The city likely had to increase the, uh, the, the speed limits to, to be in accordance with federal law, essentially. Otherwise, anyone could essentially, um, challenge their ticket and win in court. So just to be clear. Now, I think a lot of this discussion, in my own opinion, is there's a lot of opinions for this particular stretch. It's always been that way, especially when you talk about lane reductions. So it does take time, and there are a multitude of options. And usually, other things do come up, right, in these discussions as stop signs, crosswalks, other elements. I, I just think those take a lot of time. I frankly will tell you, the cost of sort of getting a consensus or even getting to a majority is gonna cost you more than us putting it down on a piece of paper. And just literally, that's the, the cheapest part of this discussion, honestly. It's the getting the input, going through the process, feeling like everyone's had their say and then everyone's been heard. I'm very used to these neighborhood traffic management. This is some element of it, and it always comes down to there's a variety of opinions and a lot of different good ideas that come into these things. And, um, so the changes that end up getting implemented a lot of times are sometimes, is not the same as what you thought at the beginning, but it goes through this iterative process.
Thank you. Go ahead. Councilmember Clovin.
That's pretty clear tonight. We had four not in favor, three in favor. Two of the emails that came in were one in favor, one not in favor. And then you look at the, the HOA polling itself. Only a hundred twenty-nine of five hundred and three actually responded to it, so thought that was important enough to respond to. And of that, um, you know, you had a mix, mostly in favor and some not in favor. So we, we don't have a mandate to do this. That, that's the challenge. I mean, as a council, there's, there's, but I, I'm in favor, favor of erring in public safety's favor. But just acknowledging that if we did this, it, it's gonna cost us relative to where our transportation dollars go.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I, I agree. It costs money. It's one of those things that, you know, I think you decide where to place your bets, sort of, and like-- And like, putting your bets on safety is never really a bad bet, I think, for me. Yeah, the documentation at the Department of Transportation is pretty compelling, I would say. And I don't know if you've had a chance to read it. I found some of their stuff on how these things could impact or how these things could help. So I don't, I'm not saying like this is the number one thing we have to do tomorrow. There's more stuff that needs to get done. I think there's more work to be done in the community and like, because it could really be nice, right?
And it would be nice to have our chief of police weigh in too. And I don't really know if there've been issues.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, whenever you have the, I don't know if you guys, but whenever you have the two lanes going to one, like you do when you're going southbound and right after the stop sign at the pool, it's like it's a drag race. I don't know if you guys have experienced this, when you have the two to one lane, like every time, not every time, that's an exaggeration, sometimes. And, you know, it's, the visual impact and the physical impact of a narrower street, I mean, it has an impact on driver behavior, so.
Councilmember Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. He's been trying to let me in for a couple, it's okay, it's okay. I can see both sides of this. I think that hearing from the residents and seeing a lot of the letters that we did receive via email are super helpful. I think hearing the descriptions from the residents who are living in Dana Hills currently, right now, was very helpful. And it wasn't until, I think it was Mr. Wheeler described it, I could not understand, Nancy, I'm sorry, what you were trying to describe, until Kevin brought it to light. The fact that there are people who are trying to get to their homes in Dana Hills that live up the street and that you would have to wait for everybody in a single line. And if you're not peeling off and turning left on Montero Circle to get to your home or you're not turning left onto Mount Whitney to get to your home, but you have to go past that, you have to wait. You're going to have to wait in a line. Right now, you have two options. You can use two lanes to either continue going straight or turn on one of those other side streets. I'm not quite sure what Councilmember Juan means by drag racing and going from the two to one. Maybe you mean the one to two, coming down the hill? So they're drag racing up the, you race to get to the stop sign and then? For the merge, okay, okay. I'll have to go back up there and drive again. Pedestrian safety and public safety clearly is high on the council's priorities as well as to the residents who filled out the survey for us. That was something I believe that Vice Mayor Trupiano and I worked on together. And we definitely have Vision Zero. So my concern is I don't want to waste any dollars. I know that, I know that we have the O-Bag money. I don't want to put that in jeopardy at all. And I know that we're already having to commit, I think it's almost $145,000 from the gas tax, because it says for that grant, we had to put in our own remaining funds to meet the $850,000 for this, for this project, right? Plus, there would be an additional, maybe $100,000 that we would have to, and this is for option three, is what I'm talking about. Option two to me is a no brainer, but I don't think that that's something that we should consider. Option one, Larry, can you tell me if that is with thicker, more permanent striping, staying in four lanes currently, the current way, status quo?
Yes, it would be status quo, utilize thermoplastic paint, which is a more permanent paint. Not to say traffic paint isn't permanent, but it's got retroreflativity. It's probably, you know, it hasn't been restriped in a long time, so, but whatever it looked like, probably, whenever it last was striped, it will return to that situation. I mean, I would also say, you know, just for clarity maybe is that option three, you know, you're still debating if you're going to implement it, right? So the sort of downside of option three is you put the traffic paint out and you don't restripe. Or you choose, you know, you choose to stripe it back as is with more permanent paint. That's like, actually, obviously, you know, a duplication of costs. But you're keeping open the possibility, obviously, for the further discussion, right? And frankly, you know, if you're going to involve and have this discussion, it's going to, it's going to take you six months at least, in my opinion, to really go through it and have people give their opinions and design it and then come before the council.
Okay. But in doing that, we don't jeopardize any of the additional funds?
I don't believe so. I think utilizing the traffic paint will still suffice for what the plans call for right now.
Mm-hmm. And not striping, because I think I heard one of the commenters mention there's no need to pave it. We have to pave, don't we need to pave our streets? Isn't there, what is it, the street score? I'm using the wrong verbiage. Yes?
This, this segment of road was identified as being selected from almost the batch of, from three years ago, right? We've talked about this multiple times. So this will be the last batch. I don't know exactly all the criteria that went into creating that batch, but since I wasn't here. But it is already included as part of our project. So to remove it would be problematic with Caltrans and MTC, because that is part of the federally funded project.
Okay. And then I think the last point that I want to make is there are still 500 homes, 500 people who have to get to their homes. Am I correct that there were less than 30 homes that are in this stretch? And I don't want to minimize the people who are affected by this at all. What I'm trying to say is I think that I'm agreeing with my fellow council members that we need to take a little bit more time to, there is no buy-in from the HOA. They're at least, I'm going to call it neutral. I don't even think that that's the correct term to use, but let's call it neutral for sake of argument. And I heard from one resident that they didn't even receive the email. So I'm curious on how many Dana Hills residents are aware that this is happening, that reducing the lanes is an option. I know that there were name tags, not name tags, emails that went out. I know that you notified a lot of the homeowners, but I do think that we need to hear more from them before we're making, I'm going to call it a drastic change for people who have probably lived there for, some of them decades. And I don't want to lose any money. So I think I'm in favor of option three right now.
And also too, we don't want to affect the rest of the citywide paving project, right? It's, I'm looking at my notes, it's Mitchell Canyon, Regency, there's, there's a lot more to this that's at stake.
At the other, and I showed before, I mean, like Mitchell Canyon, we were hoping to do before school started, but I think it would be very difficult at this point to do it before school starts. So just to be aware, we're going to have to try to time that while school's in session. Because we're, we're going to run out of time before we can, by the time we award it, usually it takes two to three weeks for a contract to be mobilized. So we're probably looking into late August, early September when school starts, I think, like first week of August, roughly speaking.
So can you, I'm sorry to belabor this, but for that timeline, doing option three is delaying this how? We're saying that we want to go ahead with striping. We want to use the funds that we currently have. And all we want to do is discuss what happens possibly in the future if we do anything else in terms of safety.
I wouldn't categorize it as a delay. I mean, I simply change the spec and then we would advertise. So there is a slight change. And then I would consider the discussion of changing from four to two as a separate item that you're going to come back at some point. If, if I thought that the issue could be decided relatively quickly, you could have considered some options of like change ordering out the striping, right? You would not get a great price because you already have a bid, but I don't think that the timeline works and I wouldn't suggest it to the council because you'll probably run out of time. Because to get everyone on the same page, to do all this, and then to then ask the sole, the bidder to do $70,000 potentially dollars of striping is probably not the most ideal way you want to bid it out. So I think that's why I wouldn't consider that as, that was another option I considered.
How quickly would we have to move to do that, to change order out essentially?
Before it gets striped, right?
Yeah, so like a rough order of timing on that?
Probably three months, right? Because it's not like it's a very big paving project. This is a surfacing, so they would use a subcontractor too. So it would be done probably pretty quick. You would, you could put, typically after you resurface, for the first few days, you put what they call floppies, right, those plastic tabs.
That's a great name.
Yeah, and you just lift those and then the striper comes in. And usually you time the striper to come in to do a lot of roads, because they want to, they don't want to mobilize multiple times. So sometimes they'll sit for a few weeks, depending on when it got done in the order. So, but to put, leave floppies out there for a year, you know, potentially longer, I do not recommend that, because it's a safety issue. You go back to the same thing as, you know, those floppies don't stay that long. And at night, it would be more potentially an issue, because if you lost a few, someone might not be able to know where they're at lane line wise.
So if, yeah, so if we could come to consensus within two months or something, then that's potential. But other than that, you've missed the time window.
Yeah, but you would still have, you would do a change order and so you would be getting probably not the best price potentially, but it doesn't mean it couldn't happen.
But then you avoid the resurfacing.
You do, you do save that. And I considered that, you know, as a back and forth, but it is quite a bit of work. And you still have to go out to Caltrans because you're changing it.
Right.
Oh, wait, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
Okay, never mind, okay. Sorry, you, I went down the wrong path on that one. Okay. Yeah, and I just, you know, it is a change, right? I mean, it's a significant change for residents, but, you know, there are lots of neighborhoods in town that have one way or single or few lanes in, or few ways in with single lanes. And I think in your neighborhood, it's similar. In Peacock, it's similar, some, I mean, it's fairly common, but, you know, I, I mean, I acknowledge it's a change, so.
Thank you. The only thing I can add to this, the first 16 plus years of my residency here in Clayton, I lived in Dana Hills. And in fact, I go up there regularly, because there's a number of people that I know still that are in the area. And my, my concern is public safety. I know we just barely addressed it, but the issue from my perspective is not going up from Marsh Creek to Dana Hills. The issue is coming out of Dana Hills down, and that's where the speed gets picked up. And that's my concern about the potential for safety that could negatively impact some of the residents there. Also, I don't want any, I don't want to consider, I don't want to lost sight of the fact that if whatever we do in there may disrupt some of the entrance to their parking garages for the people on that stretch between the Cabana and down to Marsh Creek. So I want to make sure, at least from my perspective, that we consider the safety aspects here. And if it means delaying this for a later time, and that's just my opinion. I have four of their colleagues here that have maybe stronger opinions than I do. So I just want to make sure that we, I don't lose sight of the public safety aspect of this. And I don't know how you configure it, two lanes, three lanes or what, but somehow we have to mitigate that speeding that takes place coming down from the Cabana Club down to Marsh Creek. So, go ahead, speak.
And I'm sorry, Adam, to put you on the spot, because I know you've only been here three weeks. But did the chief or any of the sergeants mention any of the stats for that neighborhood prior to this meeting? I'm just curious if they're, what the enforcement looks like up there.
No, there was no, no meaningful conversation with the chief on this item. When the item was brought forward to add to the agenda at our staff meeting, there was an initial discussion where the chief shared, but not to any great detail, so no.
Okay, thank you. Oh, go ahead.
You know, I was going to say, when Mr. Grover contacted me and I looked up your email, Ben, of March of 2023, and we were first talking about this, I did ask the, I did forward your information and message to the chief. And he did put, what are they, the traffic meters that kind of says you're going too fast and what the speed limit is. But again, that was a temporary fix, right? I don't know the results of that. It would be interesting to know, I can't remember if I followed up with him on that to say, you know. I think we only did it for a couple of weeks. So it would be nice to loop him into this discussion if we go with option three. And I too, used to live in Mount Air, Mount Air Circle for eight and a half years, but I came in Oak Street. I swore to my husband it was faster than coming up Mount Air Parkway, so. We used to race each other, not race, going speeding. Not speeding, but I'd say, I think this way's faster and he'd say this way's faster, but, yeah.
Wonderful, Paul.
It was kind of a draw. Okay.
Okay, where are we headed here? We got any consensus?
I mean, I think our engineer is looking for guidance on how to proceed, because he wanted the results of this discussion. If it were not for the funding aspect, I would be like, let's do it right now. But because of that, I think that overrides some of the others. So I think option three is, is good for us. It gives us time, which is nice, and it leaves open the possibility that we can take action. So I would, I would, I don't know how to formally do that, but I would recommend we go with option three.
Councilmember Tillman.
Oh, excuse me. Unless somebody else has something to say. Option three. Is that sufficient, Stephanie? Is that enough of an emotion?
If you could read out what option three would be, that would be very clear for the public in the record.
I would recommend proceeding with the pavement project as is, as authorized by all of these organizations, to using paint instead of typical thermoplastic after the surface treatment to its existing configuration of four lanes. Completing the current project, then proceed the following year with, with further action on resurfacing over the painted stripes and apply a permanent reconfigured striping pattern to be determined.
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilmember Juan and seconded by Vice Mayor Trupiano.
Thank you, councilmember.
Any further discussion?
The only other thing, yes, yeah. I don't, you, the last part that you just added was.
Did I read it wrong?
Well, you read it how it is. But I think as we were discussing, discussing it, there were a lot of other options that people were throwing out. And I think that the goal was to figure out what best, yeah, so TBD, saying that it would only be two lanes and leaving it.
I didn't say two lanes.
I thought you did, okay, okay.
I said configuration to be determined.
Okay, I thought I heard two lanes, okay.
Is that what I said?
I don't know, Stephanie.
That's what I meant to say.
Okay, good.
Okay, so we have a motion. Larry, do you have any other comments?
I have one quick question before we do it. If we in the end decided just to restripe it with thermoplastic paint like it was an option number one, what would the cost be for that?
I think the magnitude of the existing striping, I anticipated being probably around $10,000 to $20,000. And so you would need to resurface and do the $10,000 to $20,000 worth of striping again.
You have to resurface it again and then, and then, but sort of the cost is the resurfacing and the paint as well?
You may be able to put it on top, but I don't think it'll look very good, honestly. And then if you try to grind out the paint, it will look bad again. So I, this, the most aesthetically pleasing, even though it's probably more costly, is to resurface and then, with the thinnest coat, like I mentioned earlier, and then restripe it with thermo. So that would be like, obviously, you know, sort of a wasted cost, right? Because you really.
I was trying to figure out what the wasted cost was on this.
If you went back to exactly what it is, yes.
Okay, we have a motion and will the city clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Juan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Trupiano?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Thank you, you have five ayes.
All right, thank you. That now completes the. That now completes the action items in eight B in particular. And we will move on to the last couple of items on the agenda for this evening. The first one is, anyone from the city council that has items limited to requests for directives or future meetings? Any comments? Of course, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just my request that I've had since October, and that is for the council, good night. Thank you.
Thank you for attending.
Thank you.
And that is for the council to bring back a future agenda item to discuss either having the city attorney hire a third-party investigator to look into actions of council members and make sure that there were no Brown Act violations and/or toxic work environments. This is my request that I've made since October, and I would like to bring it back to the council to discuss further, and then possibly create a censure policy. And then my other request was for us to have someone come back and do governing, training. So ethics, governing ethics training, I think is how I'll best describe it. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Another, that completes item number nine, and we move into council reports, and Councilmember Clovin, would you please kick it off?
Well, since our April sixteenth meeting, the following weekend, we had Clayton Cleans Up, and it was a joy. It was a beautiful day, and we had over three hundred participants, there was lots of people out in white shirts. I wanted to thank again Juji Yoshi for putting together the logo. I've worn my shirt since because it's just really cool. And it was just an awesome day and a great community and barbecue, music, and just being together, lots of community groups in the, in the courtyard afterwards, really enjoyed it. Thank you for the council members who were there. Jim, as always, you were on the barbecue, and you were helping with, with the, the library, it was, it was a fabulous day, and the Tillman family was rocking in it as well. So thank you all, it was a great time. Following weekend, we had art and wine, and so it was a busy weekend volunteering, doing vendor breakfast and information booth, but also being a participant and out there just checking out the vendors, eating great food, and buying Mother's Day gifts, et cetera. So it was, it was a phenomenal experience and just a really good time. Attended the Clayton special meeting last Tuesday, and I wanted to thank my, my fellow council members and looking forward to what the future looks like. And I had a chance to talk to a lot of Dana Hills residents recently regarding tonight's meeting, and just got to say, I didn't get any consensus, I got a lot of heck yeah, no way, and I don't cares. So there was not consensus, it was really, you were either really passionate one way or the other, or just search me, I don't care, and that, that was literally the, the consensus of many residents I talked to there. So this is an interesting conversation. Just so you all know, mark your calendars for Sunday, June 2nd, it's going to be an awesome day in Clayton. Pride is happening, the Pride Parade, we're getting incredible, I'll let Holly tell you more about it, but it's coming together fabulously, and lots of meetings, lots of conversations, and it's going to be a fun time. That's in my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Juan?
You're zigzagging. Never mind.
You have no.
No. The Budget Committee met earlier today, we're planning to meet a series of times from now to the end of the budget, so that was, that was great. It was great meeting the, some of the new staff, and I thought that was a productive Councilmember Tillman and I met with, with the residents in Stranahan Park a couple weeks ago, I don't remember the date, to talk about the, as part of the ad hoc committee, to talk about ideas for the parking permit program that some had requested. I think we got a lot of good feedback. I want to summarize that, and then I'll send the draft out to, to folks and, and make sure that I captured those thoughts correctly, but, you know, there was a, there was a great turnout, I think there's a high level of interest for those residents, and, and some good, good ideas. So that was, that was a great conversation. We were joined by our police chief, and it was a, it was a warm day in the park, so that was nice. A lot of emails and phone calls regarding tonight's agenda items, so that was, I appreciate the discussion, and that is the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. I won't belabor Clayton Cleans Up. Thank you, Councilmember Clovin, for putting that together, as well as all of the sponsors. On the twenty-fifth, I also attended the Cal Cities East Bay Division, Cal Cities, or League of California Cities East Bay Division meeting with the mayor, and I will let you give the update on that. Rob Bonta, who was our Attorney General, was there, he gave an update on organized retail theft and policies that are coming out about that, fentanyl, as well as trafficking. He also talked a lot about our housing and homelessness and some of the issues that are surrounding that. That doesn't really affect us here in Clayton necessarily, but there are some policies that are going to be coming down from Sacramento that will touch on how you can move encampments or people who are homeless from your, from your cities. So as I hear more about that, I'll bring that back to the council. I also attended the Art and Wine Festival, I think there were over a hundred vendors that Peter and I provided breakfast to on both mornings, and all of them said that their, our CBCA Clayton Art and Wine Festival is the best one that they attend because of the vendor breakfast, not because of the people too, spending, buying all their wares, but no other cities are doing this. So kudos to former council members who started putting that on, and then we took up the mantle on her carrying it. Councilmember Juan already talked about the parking permit program in Stranahan, and on the third, I attended the thirtieth anniversary of Ed's Mudville Grill celebration. I read the proclamation, and I have to say, there, it was almost standing room only in there because so many people wanted to come by and congratulate them, and that went on from eight o'clock when they closed their doors until pretty late in the evening with them celebrating. And so it was nice to have him actually show up in person. They are very near and dear to my family's hearts, they welcomed us when we moved here in two thousand and three, and our firstborn was in her infant carrier, she was only three months. And it was fun to see everybody celebrating him because he has done a tremendous amount of goodwill here in this community. And he also said he wasn't coming tonight, so I was pleased to see him. His son Dominic was going to come and get it for him instead, and they decided to postpone their trip so they can come in person. Last night, I attended our, my Mount Diablo Education Foundation Board Meeting. That foundation is pretty critical to the schools in all of Mount Diablo Unified School District, and so our two schools, the elementary school as well as the middle school benefit from the funds that are raised. We have the school garden that is at the elementary school that we help fund, and then we also send kids to outdoor fifth grade camp. So we're having a bocce tournament this weekend here at Skip's, and we will have over sixteen teams competing, but it's nice to know that there are other people who are coming from out of Clayton to spend money and spend their local dollars here. And that's it. I had several Clayton Pride meetings, thank you, Councilmember Clovin, for teeing that up. We are having Clayton Pride, it's our third, on Sunday, June 2nd, that's at ten AM, and Congressman DeSagne will be our keynote speaker. We also have some performers that are coming that have sang with some pretty famous musicians. What is the name of the musician that he sang with? I'm drawing a blank. It might be Peter Gabriel, maybe. That's horrible, but I can't remember. But it should be fun. So that's Sunday, June 2nd, ten AM, downtown Clayton. Peter Gabriel is not coming. Sorry. Someone who's sang backup with him is coming. And it's, and it's going to drive me nuts. It's not Peter Gabriel, is it him? Fantastic. That's it. And I've had several meetings with city staff. Yeah. Minimize that. Still come, but not Peter Gabriel.
Thank you.
He's not coming.
Councilmember Tillman. Very busy lady, very busy lady. Okay, Vice Mayor Trupiano?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Juan and I had a Climatex meeting, or a meeting with Climatex on April seventeen, and they will be presenting to us at the next council meeting, an update on our projects that are going on with them throughout the city. The next meeting is May twenty-first. Councilmember Clovin and I, as part of our ad hoc committee, met with Gary Phelps from Bob Murray and Associates about our city manager hiring process. We did have a closed session in there somewhere as well, nothing to report out. I've been meeting weekly with Adam, and thank you, Adam, for doing that, I always appreciate that. Councilmember Juan and I also had our city-sponsored special events committee meeting on April twenty-second, and we've concluded our sponsorships for Concerts in the Grove, and then in a couple of weeks are wrapping up, Fourth of July, and our Classic Car Show, which we're excited about, and finalizing all the marketing materials. I also had a East Contra Costa Habitat Conservancy meeting, and they sent me the annual report, if anybody wants to look at it. They actually did a beautiful job, and it really is preserving, you know, wildlife and endangered species in our immediate area. They do terrific work, a lot of it hand in hand with Save Mount Diablo. The mayor and I attended the mayor's conference in Pinole, and he can certainly talk about that more, but I found it was interesting, county supervisor John Joya was talking about the resilient Contra Costa shoreline and the effects of climate change on our county. We're going to be one of the counties most affected by climate change, rising sea levels, wildfire exposure, so on and so forth. And they also talked about a lot of communities, particularly in Contra Costa counties, that are losing their state farm insurance, and Clayton was on that list, and I did forward that to you, Adam, but I didn't get a, we didn't get a chance to talk about that today. I think Arinda is the most affected, but we are on that list, and so the only other thing I had was the, where the library does have a new, the, I'm tired. The Library Foundation has a new president, Diana Bauer, and our foundation board will be meeting next Tuesday. They are still looking for board members, so if you know anybody who loves the library and wants to get involved, they are in need of, and we're meeting with the Girl Scouts tomorrow at City Hall, so I look forward to that. That's it.
Thank you. We've all been very busy because we had a long stretch between the, the last meeting in April, but on the eighteenth, they attended the, as your representative, to the County Connection Board meeting, making sure that bus service continues throughout our region. And then on the twentieth, Saturday, Clayton Cleans Up, and I want to compliment Councilmember Clovin for taking the leadership role in that, and it was a spectacular day, lots of people, lots of trash and refuse picked up, and of course, last but not least, was the barbecue sponsored by Republic Services. On the twenty-fourth, I attended the East Bay Alarm Association meeting where Sheriff David Livingston made a presentation, and he gave an overview of what was going on in the department and how he's addressing all of the issues within the county and the unincorporated areas, and those areas where he has contracts to provide police services. Then on the twenty-fifth, the next day, journeyed out to Alameda for the East Bay Division meeting, which featured none other than Attorney General Rob Bunta. And I suspect that the reason why he was there because he lives in Alameda, and, but he only took questions that were pre-arranged anyway, but it was an interesting talk to hear him from his perspective on things going on from the Attorney General's office. Then, twenty-six through the twenty-eighth, the Art and Wine Festival, it was a fan, the attendance on Saturday outpaced the year before, and overall, the, the event probably made more money for the community through the CBCA, and in excess of two hundred thousand dollars gross, there's still expenses. But it was a great event for two days, people were out there having a wonderful time, and it was a great, great event. We attended the city special council meeting on the thirtieth. The second of, of May, we attended the mayor's conference in Pinole along with the vice mayor, and right supervisor John Joya was there making presentations again, and I think we covered that fairly well. On the third, I attended the EBRICS, or the East Bay Regional Communication System Authority meeting, and at that meeting, that's the, that's the meeting that, or group that oversees the radio system for first responders in Alameda and Contra Costa County, and we have a brand-new executive director, former police chief from Pleasanton, David Swing, and we finalized his, his agreement with, with that entity, and now he's the new executive director. Have to mention this, Monday, or excuse me, Sunday was Cinco de Mayo, and we had a great evening at the Chop House where he had a special Cinco de Mayo menu, and great that we were honoring, and I thank Councilmember Tillman for bringing that to our attention for Ed Moresi and the fine things he does in this community. And finally, today, this morning, I had the pre-city council meeting with the interim city manager, but last but not least, I want to start promoting before the next city council meeting, on, on May twenty-seventh, ten, or eleven AM at the Grove Park, we will have the Memorial Day event that we do every year where we balance between ourselves and Concord for Veterans Day, and this one's going to be a special one because we have, it's a joint effort by both the VFW Post fifteen twenty-five and Commander Mark Steinberg and the United States Marine Corps. Stand by for that. All right, that's all I have. Wes?
Can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
I just have to correct it, it's James Taylor's backup singer, he sang with James Taylor.
So James Taylor's coming?
James Taylor is not coming. Arnold McColler is.
All right.
Yeah, Taylor Swift is coming.
Okay, that concludes all council reports, city manager reports. Nine forty-seven PM, we are adjourning until the meeting on twenty-one May.